Thank you all for coming to the meeting. I appreciate all their visitors tonight, as well as our department heads and media paper. Before we get started, we'll just pause for an invocation of our pledge, and I have a couple of announcements, and then we'll get right into the meeting. Stand together at the same time. Whether we pause to give you thanks at this time or we enter the season of Thanksgiving, and that is all, we have a thankful heart for all the good blessings that you've bestowed upon us and upon this community. And we ask that you help the citizens of our community appreciate Thanksgiving season, in order that we might honor you as we give thanks. Go with us through this meeting, help us conduct it in your will, in Christ's name I pray.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic where which stands one nation under God, in the visible for liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, you may proceed. The way of announcements, I'd like to mention our tree lighting ceremony here at City Hall tomorrow night, that's the 19th of November at 6:00 PM. They'll have a good deal of live entertainment along with the Christmas tree lighting ceremonies. This will be our third official tree lighting ceremony. We had a very small crowd, about eight people at the first one, maybe seven fifty last year, and we're hoping for a thousand people tomorrow night to show up to help us kick off the Christmas season. Got me showing off our new gift that came to us from Birmingham, the Birmingham area. This tree went on display in all that, where's that?
Brookwood.
Brookwood, I want to say Mountain Brook, Brookwood Village, and they've given it to us, and we were able to get it delivered to Hamilton by Van Fruth, thanks to Tyler Knight and his Keith's Kitchen organization, they donated the hauling of the tree. So we've had a tree delivered, and we're ready to showcase it in Hamilton, Alabama tomorrow night. Also, on the 22nd, the 23rd, the Hamilton Home Town Christmas will be observed by our downtown merchants, and they'll be given special hours, I believe six to ten additional hours at their stores on the 22nd, and then some other special hours on the 23rd to kick off the Christmas season for our downtown merchants. City Hall will be closed for Thanksgiving on the 28th, that's Thanksgiving Day, that's Thursday, and then on the 29th. So we'll be observing Thanksgiving on the 28th of night by all city employees. So keep those dates in mind, tomorrow night here at City Hall, Downtown Merchants, 22nd, 23rd, and City Hall will be closed, and City Services on the 28th of night of the month will observe us Thanksgiving.
Well garbage, Thursday's garbage we pick up Wednesday, and Friday's Monday?
That's correct, that's correct. Thanks, yes. And that's very important to our citizens, no wonder, put their cans out to the road in the evening. The 28th and 29th, and Wednesday's garbage will be, Thursday's garbage will be picked up by the Wednesday crew, and then Friday's garbage will be picked up on the Monday. Correct. So that's your dates. Okay, we're down to the beginning of our official meeting now. Tonight we're to hold a public hearing for the consideration of Sakura's Asian Cuisine Hamilton, Alabama LLC located at 121 Military Street South for a restaurant retail liquor license. At this time, all interested parties will have an opportunity to speak for or against this application. Okay, if there's no parties here to speak on behalf or against the application for this license, then I'd like to make a recommendation that we approve the application for Sakura's Asian Cuisine here in Hamilton.
I'll make a motion.
We got a motion, need a second?
Second.
A second, all in favor? Thank you. Then thirdly, I'd like to make a recommendation that we conclude this public hearing. We need a motion to close the hearing. I made a motion, need a second? Okay, Herb made a second, all in favor? Thank you. That concludes our public hearing for Sakura's. All right, item one on the regular meeting would be to recommend to approve the minutes of the November 4th, 2018 council meeting at this time, we need a motion on that.
I'll make that motion.
I'll just make a motion, will we approve those minutes? Need a second?
Second.
Danny second, all in favor of approving these minutes? Thank you. Item two would be a recommendation to post a job opening for a part-time worker at our city library, and that was approved in our budget to hire a part-time worker for a city library. I need a motion on that matter.
I'll make a motion.
Make a motion, I believe, we need a second?
I'll second.
Gene second, all in favor of posting that job? Thank you. Item three is a recommendation to approve the longevity pay for all the city employees, not something that's been done for a number of years by the city at this time of year.
I'll make a motion.
You got a motion, need a second?
I'll second.
All in favor? Thank you. Item four is a recommendation to consider a new franchise agreement with Charter Cable. Charter Cable has bought up West Alabama TV Cable, and we extended their charter agreement previously, is that correct?
Yes, sir. We had the existing franchise agreement with West Alabama, and Charter took that over, and then we agreed to the assignment of that franchise agreement to Charter. Now Charter has come back to us and has requested that we enter into a franchise agreement with them specifically, not just an assignment of the open, and one of the main reasons was to have more uniformity with all their franchise agreements. So I've talked with gentlemen, back and forth, looked at their proposed franchise agreement. It's a standard franchise agreement, the one thing that's different for it is they went up on the franchise fee. We charged two and a quarter percent to West Alabama, and they requested us to go up to three percent. So we will make a little more percentage off of this franchise fee. Everything else looks convenient or is a standard franchise. There's going to be a four, ten-year agreement with options to extend it additional five years or to be interested in terms of the general.
And are we going to get a copy of this?
Yes, we can have a copy.
So we don't have to vote tonight since we've got the same?
We did not have to vote tonight, no. It's just presented tonight, and it's not an urgent issue since they are under the franchise agreement. We need to vote on it at the next meeting, if possible.
Would you like to go with the first recommendation there to consider the franchise agreement?
Yes, sir, if we want to vote on that, if there's going to be opposition to that, then there's no need to have a vote, and we can just present it at the next meeting, and people will do both of them.
Do both of them.
We won't have to do the first one the next time, we can just vote on it the next time.
We need a motion to accept this recommendation, is that what you're saying?
If you're going to vote without reading it, you want to see it before we vote on it, take your way.
But do you need a recommendation to consider it tonight?
That's what I thought.
So we'll need to do number four, and wait about number five, actually, we're pretty neat, is that what you need?
I'll make that motion.
I'm confused now. Number four is for immediate consideration, so if we aren't going to vote on it tonight, we don't need immediate consideration of it?
Well, I guess if we want to go ahead and see if we're going to have unanimous consent, if you're going to vote no on it, then we won't have it, we can just present it at the next meeting. But Mr. Sanderson made the motion to unanimous consent, we have a second.
We have a second to change motion?
No, sir.
We have a motion and a second, to consider a new franchise agreement with Charter Cable. So we need to vote on that matter at this time, to consider. Any of your votes?
I'm not, I mean, I'm not voting on something that I haven't read, so it's either vote down there or vote nothing, so I don't know.
I'll vote on it, it's stated.
But if we vote yes to consider it, then the next vote is to vote down, so are we all going to vote no or to vote?
We're going to tie the vote next matter. Still, we're about no.
I guess.
Okay, we're going to spring both up at the next meeting.
That's right, spring that for both.
It has to be announced, so we can't consider it. Okay, or is there any other business, or not?
Do you, are we all done with words? Do you mind if I speak just a little bit?
We don't mind.
Okay.
Come on up to the front, though.
Okay. It's been, if I'm not mistaken, a year since I was here last time, and the biggest thing was on covenants and restrictions and easements and ordinances predominantly, and I think that Scott was going to follow up with some of the stuff on a particular neighborhood. Since that year has gone by, I have experienced, as a licensed Realtor, people from other states wanting to move in, less taxes, which is great. It'd be great to have home improvements so that we can go up on property values, that would be awesome. But, you know, they're wanting to get out of the snow, and they're just picking, I have conversations with them, I'm like, how did you find, you know, Hamilton? Well, you know, we just think it'd be a good place for us to go. We start looking around at properties, and they're looking at a $200,000 home, and they're like, Carrie, this is perfect, this is everything that I wanted. But, and I'm speaking specifically on one property that I had so much issues with, $200,000 piece of property that had less than appealing neighbors. Then the street was so narrow because it was just a street that was thrown in, the mailbox is down the road around the corner, so the whole gist of this is that there's no continuity, there's no, when it comes to the city ordinances, they're not enforced. I've heard the stories about if you have a mobile home that's gone, one effort to improve the city is to replace it with a newer model, is that correct? Six or eight years or newer, something like that?
Eight years, I missed it completely.
Right, but there's been a couple of situations to where that didn't happen, you know, there was a couple that got burned or destroyed, and they just hauled in older models, you know, right in. The issue that I had in Oak Hill subdivision, which was one of your subdivisions that you built, which, that issue is still ongoing, and, you know.
Yeah, in Oak Hill subdivision, they can't put a mobile home in.
Right, this is not a mobile home.
Right, that put in?
Right.
Okay, I'm sorry.
But, and this is worse than a mobile home, they backed in a tractor trailer in the front yard, and my parents steps up to it, they have, and I sent the mayor several pictures on it, and I guess it's a little disheartening for me because as a Realtor, I worked with custom builders in Huntsville, and I've been blessed to work with Tommy Battle, who has done wonderful things with that city, and working with custom builders developing subdivisions, they take pride in those, and they make sure that they follow through, and when I look at what's happened at Oak Hills...
Excuse me, are you speaking of Oak Hills again?
Yeah.
Well, isn't it, they can't do that in there?
Well, they did.
Well, if you read the, what's on record, that you can do.
Right.
That you can't do that.
Have you driven through Oak Hills lately?
No, I haven't, no.
I would highly recommend that.
Yeah.
I would highly recommend that.
But you know what I'm saying, you just put, you can't put just anything in there, it's on record on what those lots, what can be put there and what can't.
Right, now I get covenants and restrictions, and I get what's on the paper, but if it's not enforced, they're going to do it.
That's right.
And...
I'm just saying, it should be enforced, but it...
So who does the enforcing?
I don't, I don't know. I have not, if they turned it into the city or whatever that's in the amendments in there...
Right.
That the city would have to enforce it.
Okay.
Because, I'm sorry, the covenants at Oak Hill is a project matter, that would have to be simply enforced from one landlord that has a property interest to enforce it, which is right, because covenants in several of those places have been violated. Now, there's also a different component to that, and that they may also violate ordinance, and that's where some of those not kind of play where the city would have to force it, but the private landlord would also have a simple right of action against the infringing landlord as well. Oh, well, there are only two different issues.
All the subdivisions I've built, which is a bunch of them, they all had the same covenants.
Right.
To keep that from happening, what you're saying.
I know, with all the subdivision...
Some of them may have forced them.
Yeah, I would take pride in it by saying, that's my subdivision, I built that, and I want to make sure that, you know, this has a... I highly recommend it tomorrow, just to drive around. I would, I would highly recommend to go down Savannah Lane and Oak Hill Circle and all the way around, just so that you can see what I'm talking about. But my, my question and my statement here, and it's really a statement, because when we take office as a public service position, in positions that I held in Huntsville, what what's your goal to do that the previous people didn't do? Positions aren't just paychecks, positions have purpose, and I've been gone for 33 years, and I would like to have thought that my town had grown, and it hasn't. It's generation after generation of repeating the same thing, and the fact of life is, we don't know what we don't know, and I don't know a lot, but I'm eager to learn because I want to learn, and if I do something wrong, I want to be held accountable so that I'm like, that was a great lesson, and I want to, you know, move on and make it better. The fact of the matter is, we're all going to die, and when we do, are we leaving a legacy that that person did something that made a positive difference for this town? I've been back for four years, and I'm knocking my head against the wall every day on situations, and I talk with a lot of people, and they're like, Carrie, this is great, you're so right, you're right, but we're not getting involved because, you know, I don't want to get harassed. Well, let me tell you, if I start getting things that are out of the ordinary after a certain meeting, then it's obvious where it's coming from, which is wrong, you know? Each and every one of us go to church on a Sunday morning, and we make vows, and we uphold on who we say we are, but we're not living it. I have one person that is, who guides everything that I do, and it's all about accountability, beautification, I mean, it goes back, and I'm talking as a Realtor who has a passion for my town, this is where all this comes from. I know y'all are thinking, oh, this is scattered and off the wall, no, it comes from my heart of dedication to trying to make my town better, because when you look at it, kids are graduating, they're moving away. What's the next step? They're getting married, they're having kids, mom and dad's moving to be the grandkids. I've been gone 35 years, the population is the same or less than it was when I left in 1986.
Uh, that's not true.
What's the population now?
Population's close to 7,000, 2,500, 7,000, and back when you're talking about, it was around 5,000. You're way off. Hamilton has really grown in the last five, six years.
Okay, I apologize for that number being off.
Yeah, you can't, if you just drive up down the street five years ago and try to get out there nice, you'll have 10 or 15 cars lined up under some of these red lights.
Yeah.
Used to even have a one or two.
But isn't that great?
I'm not trying to do on you, yeah, that's correct. I'm not trying to do on you, I'm just, I just...
What, we...
Know that Hamilton has really, in the last few years, I'm going to say in the last three, five years, it has really grown.
What, what...
This ramp people, they moved in three, four hundred.
Oh, at least.
Yeah, at least they did.
I've heard a lot of negativity about the ramp, and I'm like, this town would have dried up as he goes, town would have had to go for the ramp.
They're good people, I don't know the bad ones in the bunch, they're out there more, and they've done lots of moves in here, but it's, it just amazes me that I used to go down the road down here and not see a car on the avenue, you know, that they're lined up.
Right.
Now, most of it is in certain parts of the day, but any time of the day, you've got a lot of traffic on these main roads.
Um, that's my, that's my biggest thing, is just trying to make a difference. I brought a, you know, beautification and trying to enhance the city, we can't, you know, I think, I'll leave names out, but it was brought up to me at one point, we can't tell people how to live. You're right, we can't, but guess what? It's a learned behavior. Not everybody grew up privileged or with good parenting, or to know right from wrong and things like that, well, if they, if they didn't get it in their home, then they're supposed to get it from the world. So if we want to break society from the wrongdoing, they need to be held accountable, and it starts with the city. People choose to live in the city limits, there's limitations, there's guidelines, there's city ordinances, there's consequences for actions. I just went to a driving school, I got a speeding ticket, that was my fault, I broke the law, so I paid the consequences. But there's a lot of other people that are doing things that are breaking the law that have no consequences, and those consequences are keeping our population from growing. Am I the only one in this room that would like to see us have 10,000 population? Because with 10,000 population, what happens? We get more revenue, we get more groceries, we get more shopping, you know, we get more people that want to come here and build businesses? Am I out of line? If I am, I want you to tell me, I really do, because I believe that we're all here for a purpose.
When you finish, I'm going to speak.
Okay.
So get through. You're, you're commandeering to tell us how to make the city perfect, so go ahead and finish up.
I'm not telling you how to make it perfect, Bobby, I'm just saying that there needs to be accountability. Every bit of this boils down to accountability. Landowners, we've spent millions of dollars on infrastructure to get people in downtown Hamilton. You can't get in downtown Hamilton without going past a junkyard, and I think you mentioned one time that those were in the county. Landowners is not in the county. It was in their, it was in the publication that I have found, because I wasn't here at that time, that they were supposed to put a fence up. They didn't put a fence up because there was no accountability. I said, believe you went to talk to them after one or several of our meetings.
I've been there more than once.
And they said, well, it's going to cost us much more money because now the roads are higher. That's not the city's problem, that's their problem, they should have done it from the get-go. So Cypress trees are beautiful, Cypress trees are absolutely gorgeous, and they grow six feet a year, and that would be a beautiful thing to come in from Highway 278 and look at Greenbridge versus, and I'm not telling you how to run this city, Bobby, but I'm telling you, I'm speaking on behalf of a lot of people in this town that would like to see a difference, and it's just being the same thing. I mean, I would like to think that I'm sitting in, and I don't want that position, but I would, I would want to, I would want to finish out my career and say, I made a difference. And that's all I'm saying. And if people take it the wrong way, and I'm telling you how to do your job, then that's a personal thing. So, yes, I'm finished.
We take criticism, and we take corrections, and it's not a perfect world that we live in. Hamilton's not going to be perfect tomorrow, we're going to do the best we can as city leaders to function as a city. We're going to clean up the things we can, and we're going to advise others to do better with their situations, but I'm not probably going to throw them in jail because they didn't clean up their yard. I may find them, I'm not sure exactly what all we've got to do, we've got some ugly places. I'm 73, I've been here all the time, I didn't leave for 30 years and come back. I've watched Hamilton, Hamilton's not a real bad place to live, even though you make it out there. We've got lots of things going on in Hamilton, they're positive, and you want to come back from a city like Huntsville and compare us to a city that's got more federal dollars popped in it than Washington DC probably, we don't have the funds they've got to do all these problems. We're $15 million in debt when we took office, and we're trying to struggle alone here to do the best we can, and we advise these people to clean up their properties, I've been to play on them more than once. He's not the only ugly side in Hamilton, but he's one of them, he's got wrecked cars out there, and he's got some ready road stuff. He made an agreement with some former group here that ran the city before I got into this office, he was here when I came to office, he had already established himself over there and started putting wrecked cars over there, well, before any of us were elected, but we have to deal with those problems, they're here. I didn't tell him why they complied with the property and put his operation over there, but some of our city fathers made an agreement with him to let him in that, in that area. Just to find all of our faults and lay them on, and tell us that we're not living by our rules, it's easy to say you've got rules and you're going to enforce all of them, but it's not always easy to enforce them. I know your area over there, was that man's yard not junked up when you bought that house in the street? Did you buy it with his yard?
Oh, it didn't look anything like that when I first spotted there, and I don't live over there now, I was going to use it as a rental property, but everybody that I showed the properties to said, Carrie, we love the house, we love the location, but we don't want to drive by that every day, so I ended up selling it, I bought it very fast, I sold it until I'm done. And I'm not, and I'm not.
We take criticism of the best of them, and we can be busted by all the do-gooders in town, and, you know, it doesn't, it doesn't make us not want these things to be right, but just to come down here and blast us... just to come down here and blast us, you know, you're welcome to come and...
I apologize for that, sir. I did, and I was writing out my notes, it just kept accumulating and accumulating because this has been a two-year conversation. And I think one time I met with you and you said that you had formed a committee that was going to take 20 properties at a time and get those, once you get those 20 cleaned up, this and that. And I think that's great. I really do. And there's been a few other...
We've had a little success at that, but not near as much as I thought we were going to have. We tried that approach, we're going to have to start over. That didn't exactly work. Some of these people, you can't even find them. Lay on properties here in town, they're in Muscat or somewhere, they couldn't care less how grown up they've been.
Give me their names and I'll sell them.
But, I mean, we're, we're not going to be perfect tomorrow.
I'm not expecting that, Bobby. I'm really not. I'm just trying to make a difference in the town that I'm now in.
I appreciate everything you're making. And I'm not trying to come down on you, I'm just saying, having them, we didn't, we didn't make it the way it is. We maybe have fixed everything that's messed up, but we didn't make it this way. We're going to try our best to live by ordinances. We got dog problems, cat problems, we got people wanting to put coppers in to live in, of all things. All of those are against the rules. But it's hard to fix everything that's broke. And you think people want to do better and make their properties worth more by cleaning them up? No, they don't want to do that. We'd ask them to do it by letter and by word and by call and police chief visits and all kinds of stuff. But people don't really, it doesn't bother them that much to have three junk cars out there at the corner of the yard and two broken down boats over the side of the house. Doesn't bother them at all. But, you know, I understand, a Realtor showing properties, it's hard to drive by those places. So we don't, we're not happy about it, but...
But it's more than that. What I want you to understand, it's more than that because it's property values is the most, is the, is an individual's highest purchase they'll ever make. And it should be, real estate is better than any stock market, you know, because it's a tangible product, it's supposed to increase in value. So that's all I'm saying. I'm trying to uphold everybody's property values. I mean, it's killing me to see a couple of properties that I have listed for as low as they're listed because I see what's on the inside and you can't rebuild that property for half of what I have listed. So that's the only thing. And there again, the more property values, the higher taxes. It's a triple effect, so I'm just trying to do my part to make it better.
Well, we got, we got people breaking laws that are criminal. We got people breaking ordinances that are civil. We, it's not a perfect world. But we're not happy as city leaders that it's like this, but, you know, we can't do it all on the day. There'll be some problems when we all go out of office. And whoever's the next mayor is going to face some problems because people don't intend to always be right. Thank you for coming. If anybody else want to go ask Kerry's, I'm glad you're in that.
Kerry, I'll say one thing, I feel like you do about the subdivisions and things because I think you know I've built more than anybody's ever built, probably.
Yes.
And every subdivision I ever built has those, what they can and can't do any. Now, not being enforced, I know you're right there, but I drove through some of them and I can't believe some of the stuff that's there and there's no way that that's not against the rules. And they should have known it when they bought the house. When the first person bought the house, for me, they got a list of what they could do and couldn't do. But of course, when it changed hands two or three times, they got to know, got to do what they wanted to do. But I understand what you're talking about. Some subdivisions that I've built, all of them in there and go drive through them now, makes me feel kind of bad. I really think it looks bad on me though, 20 or 25 years ago, even 30 years, 40 years ago, you know? But I understand what you're saying, but you got to kind of understand the mayor's position, our position. It's hard to get anything done to make people do better.
I'd like to know if Kerry may know a percentage of actual people who actually own the home they live in versus rental property? There might be.
It might be something to that. A whole lot of people are still living in it that don't...
That's right, they've been for years, they're original owners.
I've built a lot of the forums and I don't see how they would, why they would let it go down that way, you know? Because it's actually cost them a lot. But actually, personally, I understand because I went through it for a lot of years, what you're talking about.
And I certainly did many of this respect. I'm just, one of the things that's gifted me the success is being able to get things done if you have passion and drive. So I'm just not a very passive person and if it comes across that way, I do apologize. But yes, I will be delighted to help wherever I can, free of charge, to help with any of those issues. I'll be more than glad.
Next June, we'll be qualified. Get yourself on a ticket. If you want to be a city leader, run for office. Get yourself over there and you'll see what it is then in the service post. It'll come clear to you at that point.
And it hurts to have a house sold and then the people go over there and look.
There won't be any questions in your mind about how hard it is to enforce when you get in office.
Um, yes.
Thank you all. We have any other business tonight? Got anything else? We'll need a motion to adjourn this meeting.
I'll make that motion.
Do it, sir.
Second?
All in favor?
You better, Bobby.
Thank you all for coming to be walking.